Well, we'd like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. Uh, this meeting's being recorded by both video and audio. During the visitors' comment section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address, and will then have three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the visitor comment section. In addition, there'll be a public comments section after the general manager staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the visitors' comment section. Those attending in person should sign up on the signup sheet located near the entry. Now, comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, bpu.com, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of the Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in this room will act respectively, respect to respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations towards any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the board only, and we will then determine staff's involvement. And attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside of the board. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. So my name is David Haley. I'm the member-at-large of position number two and Board Vice President. And other members of our board and staff include our General Manager, William Johnson, Bill Johnson, Tom Groneman, Second District, and Board President, who's attending remotely this afternoon, this evening, Stevie Wakes, uh, who's our First District, uh, member and Board Secretary, who's also attending remotely, Brett Parker, the Third District, Mary Gonzalez, who's a member-at-large with position number one, Rose Mulvaney Henry, a member-at-large with position number three, and our Acting Chief Counselor is Angela Lawson. Please remember to put your phones on silent. Please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. So before we begin our meeting, please join me, rise and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance. Aye. Thank you. As Ms. Lawson, Angela Lawson, please, uh, do the roll call for our attendance.
Roll call, Groneman. Haley.
Present.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Groneman.
Here.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Robert. Uh, before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda of tonight of September fourth, uh, twenty twenty-four, are there any comments on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, uh, then I ask for a motion to approve our regular session agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
This is Rose, I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the work session from August twenty-first of, um, twenty twenty-four, are there any comments?
I move approval of the minutes of the work session.
This is Rose, I second.
Um, but roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of August twenty-first of twenty twenty-four, are there any comments?
Move to approve the minutes of August twenty-first of the regular session.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Great, thank you. Now we'll turn the meeting over to our General Manager, Mr. Johnson, Bill Johnson.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Haley. Curious, I'll ask if there's anyone here, silent, speak tonight. One person that's signed up here at C.C. Harlan. I'll ask you to come up, state your name and address for the record, and you have, uh, three minutes.
My name is C.C. Harlan King. I am, my name is C.C. Harlan. I live in Wyandotte County. Um, so, uh, I wanted to clarify something that maybe I, when I spoke at the last couple of meetings, um, about the law firm, I might not have been using the correct terminology when explaining what I was trying to say. So what I'm trying to say is your law firm is playing for, uh, both sides of the same team, and that team is not Team BPU, Team Unified Government, Team USD five hundred, or Team, or Team People That Pay, That Pay Your Salaries. Um, I seen your, that's all I had to say about them. I seen your presentation over at the Unified Government, and I just had a couple of questions about something. I want to know, how does the, how do you guys have eight hundred million dollars in debt without the parent company actually knowing that you have it, because it seems like you were informing them of that? Um, that's one question. The next question is, is you had some slides up, and it said that you had sixty-seven thousand meters that, I guess you, um, guys manned, but it was seventy thousand in total meters in use. So I want to know where those other three thousand meters come from? Are those meters being manned, or they being used, or are they just in storage, because that was not discussed? Um, and then I want to also ask about, um, some numbers. So, yeah, a budget lady was asked roughly how many of those sixty-seven thousand customers were residential? She said roughly fifty-five thousand. So, in twenty twenty, when Fraunfeldter ran, he said that seventy-eight percent of Wyandotte County paid, uh, paid a utility or paid a utility bill. And so if you do, if you subtract the seventy-eight percent from the seventy thousand, that roughly ends up being about fifty-four thousand, six hundred. So my question is, is only seventy-eight percent of Wyandotte County paying a utility bill? Um, is that what accounts for those extra three thousand meters that was on your slide? And the other questions that were on here, if y'all don't mind answering those, please.
No, I love.
Okay.
Is that the, is that all your questions?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, so we have approximately seventy thousand meters, about sixty-seven or so thousand customers. That three thousand meter difference will be, uh, like on billboards. Okay, those are meters. Uh, there's a number of, of other services around to where it's not a residential or business, but, but they have, we have metered services on those anyway. I think we are, we are metering, starting to meter some streetlight installations.
Do, do we pay for the billboards, the people? Do y'all divide that up amongst the people?
No, no, no. They, they, they're all in their own rate class to, to pay, to pay for that.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I guess without telling you everything, I'm giving you certain examples of, those were other meters, uh, will be, there may be an apartment building, okay? And the, there is a meter for the whole building for the common that the property manager pays for.
Okay.
But the tenants have their own individual meter, meters.
Okay.
So all of that together, and probably a lot that I'm, some things I'm missing, will make up that difference between sixty-seven thousand customers and about seventy thousand meter services out there.
Okay, okay.
So the other eight hundred thousand dollar debt, uh, about five hundred thousand of that, thereabout, was an issue that, uh, was that the BPU issued several years ago to keep our Nierman Power Plant operating, okay? And the EPA forced a number of environmental ru- rules owners, and it was either put in all the air quality control equipment or shut the plant down.
Okay.
Okay, and we didn't want to subject our customers to the, a market to where we couldn't at least control some of the costs of what people are gon- were going to be paying. So it made financial sense, plus there was over two hundred jobs or so, uh, that we didn't want to just turn around and lay off close to forty percent or so of the utility.
Well, uh, I know my time is up, but I, I just want to clarify, the Unified Government didn't know y'all?
No, 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 no. So anytime we issued debt, I have, if, 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 if me and Lori or the staff are working on, uh, going out to sell municipal bonds, I have to get the board approval, and then we have to go to the Unified Government and get their approval.
Okay.
So they know.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, thank you.
Now, there's been a, there's been a change in commissioners, and some of those commissioners may not know, and part of, part of what I tried to do last week was educate all of them on here's where we are today, because not all of them know.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, that's the only person signed up here tonight, uh. Is there anybody online, Rob?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Ty Gorman, and I'm enabling his ability to speak now. You'll need to unmute.
All right, uh, if you can state your name and address at record, and you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thanks. This is Ty Gorman, three eight four three Parkwood Boulevard, um, six six one zero four. Uh, first, just wanted to address the, um, uh, yeah, when, uh, BPU did close, uh, Quindero because it was in non-attainment for, uh, pollution and, uh, paid a lot of money to keep Nierman open instead of closing it down and relying on market energy, which has gotten much cheaper or investing in renewable energy and other.
Ty, you're, you're fading in and out.
Okay, um, hmm. Well, I'll try to be louder here. Does that help? Let's.
Yes, it's better.
Okay, thanks. Um, want to, um, say that the clean energy is, um, an affordable source of, uh, energy for customers. So why wouldn't, um, energy efficiency and, uh, community solar and other, uh, demand flexibility programs that BPU offers, um, be a part of the customer service policy or the customer, uh, the low-income customer service enhancements that, um, that the board is, has been doing great work on? Um, I just wanted to, uh, ask that as a question. Uh, is there a connection between the payment portals and outreach through community action agencies to customers that have difficulty paying bills, um, uh, and energy efficiency and other programs that provide help both to the utility and the customer, uh, or in, and replace expensive, uh, energy use? So that's one question. Um, and the, the second question is, um, you know, the, the BPU is being forced to inappropriately pay an astronomical pilot tax for, um, you know, nearly forty million dollars, uh, between thirty and forty from the UG. Um, and does that mean that the UG can use the BPU or the BPU can give needed refunds to our most vulnerable customers when?
Thirty seconds.
When the UG can access other resources to replace, uh, those, those customers' high fees from the UG. Uh, and, and also I've been asking for a while if, if the board is, uh, advocating for us and with, with the exec, with UG, Executive State, and other programs for the resources our, like, our most vulnerable customers need. So I guess that's three questions. Uh, sorry if I, I can, I can reiterate them if needed, but, uh.
That is time.
Uh, thank you, Ty. Uh, you know, just like, uh, a lot of other things we do when it comes to power plant operation, those are business and financial decisions. It's not always easy to make, and it takes, uh, a lot of effort and a lot of time to, uh, work through that to see, you know, what it is that we should be doing, what should, what type of service we should be offering to the community. And as you know, we're going through a lot of those conversations now about the future. So in terms of the solar farm, uh, first of all, we do have a community solar farm, uh, and not all of it is subscribed. So as much as I would like to see more of our community subscribe to that, to take advantage of, of solar energy, uh, but we're just not being requested, uh, those requests are not really coming into the, to the utility as much as I would like to see. We did make application for a low-income solar, uh, project. Unfortunately, uh, we were not granted, uh, federal grants to move forward with that project, but the state of Kansas was not approved for any federal funding, uh, for our entire state. So, so that didn't happen for tho- for those reasons. Terms of the pilot, uh, I mean, we have no control over, over, you know, what those pilot fees are and what customers ultimately pay in terms of payment in lieu of tax. So I would leave, leave that there. Thank you for your call. Rob, is there anybody else? All right, so we'll move on to our guest tonight. So I'll ask Marnie to come up and introduce all of her, uh, all of the visitors here. So, and thank you for coming, agreeing to come back, which is always good to see you on an annual basis.
Thank you for having us. We're excited to be here. My name is Marnie Morgan, and I am the Executive Director of Twenty Twenty Leadership. Um, I'm going to try to be brief tonight because I brought someone else I wanted to speak, um, with you. I have with me tonight Kaitlyn Wells, uh, from our staff, as well as Heather Hole from our staff. Um, we work in eighteen local high schools to help students prepare for what comes after graduation. Uh, we really pride ourselves on preparing students to stand out in amazing ways and to really be ready to take on what the real world has in store for them. So, uh, we are excited to bring students here today to talk to you. It's kind of a different time of the year for us. We're usually here a little bit earlier when the year is wrapping up, but this way you get to hear about the great year that just passed, but also about the great year that's about to happen. A lot of things we're really excited about, especially, um, the numbers in Kansas. I think y'all will be glad to hear, up by forty percent. So last year, we went from two hundred and twenty-nine Kansas students to three twenty-one. Um, and we're already seeing students enrolling at high numbers this year, so I expect that jump to happen again as well. So we're excited about that. And then the other thing is just an increased effort to make sure we are connecting individual students to individual opportunities with local professionals to build their real wor- world skills. And you're going to hear more about that when I bring Kaitlyn up. So, um, Kaitlyn, if you'd just come up, Kaitlyn works with our Kansas students. Um, and I wanted to turn most of my time over to her since she is really the, uh, boots on the ground that works with the students you're going to hear from tonight.
Well, hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Kaitlyn Wells. I get the pleasure of working with our Kansas students in Twenty Twenty Leadership as a coordinator for student programs. Um, so just a, a little bit about myself is I'm also, I'm a native of Wyandotte County. I graduated from Sumner Academy, so I'm very happy to be working in my own community and giving students resources to, uh, make our community better and get jobs in our community. Um, so one thing I like about Twenty Twenty Leadership is that we try to remove any barriers, uh, for students that may not, uh, normally get the opportunity to network with people or get those connections. So, uh, I love that Twenty Twenty Leadership is a resource for that. Um, and then also, like Marnie said, we are doing a lot of individual, uh, connections, uh, with students and, uh, organizations, and I'm glad to be a part of that. This past, uh, for the past few, few years, um, KU, they have a program with the Architecture Department. We've been able to connect, uh, students to an internship that usually costs, uh, it's not internship, it's a summer, uh, summer camp, a week-long camp that usually costs a thousand dollars. They get, provide, uh, students a scholarship for that to attend. Also, this past, uh, summer is our first year connecting with IT solu- Snap IT Solutions. We were able to give six students plus some of their, um, siblings, uh, a, an internship, seven weeks long, paid, um, through that and workforce partnership in Wyandotte County, uh, to give them experience and get them a certificate, an intro to web design, and those students also got a laptop. So these are the types of experiences that I enjoy connecting students to so they can be successful for life after high school. Um, I also want to talk about giving back to the community. We do also have a connection with Unified Government and the Mayor's Department. At each year, and many of these students have, uh, have volunteered for the Mayor's Christmas tree lighting, and I get to see that the students are very excited to do that event, and, um, it's, it's a joy to give back to our community and partner in any way that we can. Um, another thing is that, uh, these great seniors tonight, most of them are seniors. I'm going into my fourth year, so these students started out, most of them started out as freshmen with me, and I'm going into my fourth year, their senior year, so I'm happy, uh, to see them go off and, um, what their adventures are for when they graduate. Also, we have one great sophomore here, uh, he, he had, is a legacy, had a sister in the program, and I'm happy to welcome him up here as well as being a brave sophomore and, uh, filling in some, some big shoes to fill in tonight. So with that said, I'm going to introduce the students to come up, and then we'll have them introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Rubisa Munoz, and I am a senior at Sumner Academy, and this will be my fourth year in Twenty Twenty Leadership. After high school, I hope to go to medical school at KU and hopefully become an OBGYN in my future. So I did, first of all, want to thank you guys for your support with Twenty Twenty Leadership, because without some of your help, we wouldn't have been able to go into all the programs that we've gone to. Something that I've gotten from Twenty Twenty Leadership is I've been more confident to speak in front of people. It's helped me with my speaking skills, and it's helped me not be as nervous whenever I come up in front of people to speak to, and it takes away from my fear. Also, for the Twenty Twenty Olympics, my school worked on a project to bring a legacy to us and to show off our history. And so Twenty Twenty Leadership, they helped me bring in my community to an event that I helped plan. And so we had vendors at the event to show off our, um, cases that we did at Sumner Academy with a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Hi, my name is Navea Rosa. I'm a senior at Washington High School, and I've been with Twenty Twenty Leadership for four years. Twenty Twenty Leadership has taught me, as Ms. Kaitlyn said, that there shouldn't be any barriers, especially between myself and education. I've always been really excited about a pursuit of education, and Twenty Twenty Leadership taught me that even though there seems like there is barriers between some of the harsh academics and myself, that if I push through them, that I'm going to be able to make it. And so through a lot of the programs and participation that I've participated in with Twenty Twenty Leadership, I've been able to make friends and realize that anything is possible for me and other students like myself, because there shouldn't be barriers in academics. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chip May. I'm currently a senior at Turner High School. I've been in Twenty Twenty Leadership for three years. I'm planning to go to the University of Missouri to pursue nursing. I first heard of Twenty Twenty Leadership through my school council when I first came to Turner. At first, I was kind of scared because I'm always shy. But now I can proudly say that I have gone closer to the, my peers at Twenty Twenty Leadership at Turner High School and my community. Through, behind every field trip we have taken, whether it's in the West Bottoms to learn about the historical landmark of Kansas City, or the projects we have curated, Twenty Leadership has always had those values where we always have gave, been taught to give back to our community and form our leaderships. And I know I'm going to carry those values with me throughout my whole entire life, so I'm truly grateful for Twenty Two Leadership and the staff, um, here tonight. And I'm grateful to find an organization where I can find support, as Twenty Two Leadership has supported me throughout my whole entire high school career, and I would like to do the same in the future. Thank you for listening and inviting us here tonight.
Hello, my name is Elijah Robinson. I am a senior at Sumner Academy. Unfortunately, this is my, only my second year in Twenty Twenty Leadership. Um, my plans after high school are to become a financial advisor by getting my financing degree, make either my master's or my doctorate, the, either at KU or Young KC. Um, Twenty Twenty has helped me in mainly two different ways. The first way is college exposure. They have taken me to numerous colleges just to show me how colleges, college life is and what the works and what the classrooms would look like. So get, them giving me this perspective on how college will look as I get older is really beneficial for me, and I thank them for that. Another example of how they have helped me was with the Twenty Twenty Olympics Project. Um, as my fellow teammate, uh, Rubisa, we worked together on a, on a group project. Um, she was the leader of it. She mainly planned and sorted out all the events. While I took more of the team player role, I helped out physically and to help out, make sure everything went physically okay. So that helped me get, become a team player and work together as a group as better. And I just want to say to Twenty Twenty Leadership, to all the staff, Ms. Heather, Ms. Kaitlyn, Ms., how do you do? I just want to say thank you to y'all for giving me this opportunity, and I'm glad to grow in this program, and I thank you for supporting them as well.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Del Rio. I'm a sophomore at Turner High School, and I, oh, um, this is my second year of, uh, Twenty Twenty Leadership. Twenty Twenty Leadership, um, made me more comfortable and made me more able to speak more, uh, and make new friends I haven't been able to, and it just made me be more open to people. And that's just like a good thing for me because I've always been shy, and now that like I'm, it's making me come out of my shell. And, yeah, I'm just really grateful for, uh, my, the staff and everybody that helped me. And my sister named Emily Del Rio, I don't know if you guys know her, but she got me into Twenty Twenty Leadership. And at first, I didn't like Twenty Twenty Leadership, or I didn't know what it was at all even. And, but after like now, I really like Twenty Twenty Leadership, and I like enjoying being with friends and doing more stuff than usual. And ever since, I've been more active at school and into more clubs and everything. So thank you for letting me be here.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is DeAngelo Mays. I'm a senior at Wyandotte High School. Uh, and I've been in Twenty Twenty for three years. Uh, so college career success has been like a big part of my, uh, academic journey. So it's been one of my top priorities, and, uh, Twenty Twenty Leadership has helped me become a person who can achieve that. Um, so, so much of what they've taught us, um, especially, uh, well, taught us, but specifically me, uh, about being a leader, um, and working with people has helped me in so many other opportunities outside of Twenty Twenty Leadership. Um, so like Ms. Kaitlyn said, I was in, I was one of the few people who was in Snap IT Solutions internship, internship. And, uh, a lot of what we were taught was put in a practice in that. So while we were learning how to, uh, how to work a job and how to work with team players, all the things that I've learned just recently were able to be put into practice. Um, and then with the, um, Twenty Twenty Olympics Project, that's kind of where we got that teaching. So we were still using some of the same techniques, but it was like our practice run in a, in our job. Um, so, you know, that's a, just a couple of the things that Twenty Twenty Leadership has done for us. Um, and, uh, I'd just like to thank you guys for making it possible, because, uh, if it weren't for you guys, I would have never been in this, and I wouldn't be the person I am today. So I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thanks to you all. Well, you can tell I brought rock stars again. They always, I, I don't even need to speak, but I, I do think that following up with that, want to thank you all. Um, I think that last year was a big growth year for us, not just in numbers, but in really, um, taking our work to the next level and looking at each student at the senior level specifically and saying, what really tangible, real-world experiences can we match this student with? If they want to be a lawyer, if they want to be in finance, like, how can we match them with something that takes them to the next level? And I want to be clear that it is not a secret to any of us on our team or our students that you all are responsible for putting us where we are today, whether it's the members of your board that were.
Whether it's the members of your board that were in on the founding of this organization or the consistent support that makes it possible, I want to be clear that it's not a secret to us that we owe you a debt of gratitude. And I feel like we keep raising the bar every year for students. And that's because of people like you. And and I think one of the students mentioned, important to say that we're targeting, for the most part, students that aren't involved in anything else. So a couple of them mentioned that I wouldn't have joined, right? And what we know is almost seventy-five percent of our freshmen are not in anything else and really are hesitant to join anything else. So we're taking that student and giving them this kind of experience because of your all's work. And so I left outcomes with you, I didn't want to bore you with that. Still, a hundred percent of your students graduated and eighty-six percent of them are going on to do other training. All that great stuff is in there, but I wanted you to see firsthand what you're feeding into. And they're happy to take questions, as am I or Caitlin or Heather.
Questions from the board.
I don't have any questions, just comments. You guys did excellent job when you got up there to the mic. So whatever you're doing in your leadership skills, it's working and it shows in your confidence.
Yeah, I would just echo that. Thank you all for being here and sharing your experience. And it's exciting to hear about the work and bright futures ahead for all of you.
Thank you.
As a educator, this is Stevie Wakes and I'm joining virtually, but as a as a former educator, I am certainly impressed with the work that you're doing. And one of the things that I was not aware of was that we have been supportive of this organization for years. But to hear that your numbers are growing and that you're affecting the lives of so many students, when there are so many negative things happening in our community, to know that there are many efforts being put forth to expose them to career opportunities is really wonderful to see and I'm very impressed. And so to say boring, please don't use that word when you talk about this program. It is very exciting to me and thank you so much for what for the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
I know Mr. Groneman wanted to speak. Just really quick and just echo the other comments from the other board members. But I walked in the room tonight and we'd just come from a pretty long meeting and and I looked at Angie and I said, oh, wait a minute. Is this that night? And she says it is. And I don't think you guys recognize, you know, I'm just up here, I'm a middle aged lady who's lived here my whole life. And you know, to look out and and to see you guys present to this board. Number one, y'all are making a difference. But number two, you guys are the leaders of this community in the future and I cannot wait to see what you guys do. So thank you so much for sharing some thoughts with us tonight. We appreciate you.
And I'd just like to also echo those same those same sentiments. It's always one of the highlights of the year when 2020 comes in and and addresses the board. It makes everybody feel really, really good about about the community and what's going on. So thank you for all your hard work and and thank you, students, for all your hard work and the dedication that you put into the program. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I too would like to add, I mean, with the other five members, normally you don't have all of the board weighing in on any particular issue with the enthusiasm that that we have. And we are truly, and Marty and Caitlin, to you for the continued involvement that you have. You know, this gives us hope and in our county, in Wyandotte County. We look at leadership and hear your elocution and articulation and the aspirations that you bring and what you're doing. And to be a part of it, I'm, you know, we often look at what programs the utility does contribute to. There's nothing finer that I know of having been here at the board than we have and that we see in what you're doing. And we appreciate so much that you would take time to come and share with us. And I hope that you'll keep us posted as you continue your matriculations. We we look forward to it. Thank you. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
I'm going to echo what Rose said. I'm one of the young guys sitting up here. Anyway, it's 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 always been my pleasure for the many, many years I've been at this utility to come to a board meeting and see all these smiling faces and hear about where you are in your high school studies and what you hope to do once you once you pursue a college degree. And then what your plans are beyond college. I mean, a lot of that is is very exciting to see the young talent we have in this in this community, what you aspire to be and all the work efforts that you're putting in place to to work your way through your journey. I do want to and thank you. Thank you for stepping in the big shoes.
I did for sure. We're making it work, though.
Yeah, if we're not not dropping anything along the way, you are, you've done good. And thank your staff too.
They're amazing.
For all that all that you do. It's a it's a tremendous.
I always joke with Marilyn, you know, I have three people on my staff, so it took four of us to make up for her.
Well, you're doing doing good work, so thank you. Any other things you may want to?
I don't think so. Just a huge thanks to all of you all. We I love this night because I don't get to spend much time with the students anymore since we've gotten so big. And we spent the last couple of hours together talking, using this as a learning experience. How do you research your audience? You know, how do you as you see them carrying around your pictures? That's why we were talking about researching an audience and how to give a great presentation. So we love being here and appreciate the opportunity to come and your support as well.
All right, so I'm going to ask Jeremy to step up for a second, if you don't mind. I mean, I was I was updated for information today that I thought was timely, knowing that you were going to be here. So Jeremy, I won't say anything else.
So I think you all remember, we just presented on the scholarship opportunities and the number of applicants, so on and so forth. One of the scholarships that was awarded is from a graduate of the 2020 Program from last year from Wyandotte High School. And that particular student's pursuing an engineering degree at Kansas State University. So those opportunities are out there as you get older and you get to thinking about what your path is going to be. Certainly reach out here. We can point you in the right direction because there there is assistance available for students in our community that want to go on in further education.
And if you don't go to K-State, that's okay. You can still qualify.
Jeremy, don't we have one employee that went through the program?
We do. We we he also went to engineering school at Kansas State University. He he graduated, I believe he graduated high school in 2017. Went to engineering school at K-State and now he is working in our substation engineering department for Darren McNews team out at the electric operations center there off of Turner diagonal and I-70. Gabe Gabe Papert was his name, so.
I I just want to throw out that the the folks that spoke that are going to go get, you know, medical degrees at KU. Rock Chalk, thank you. Appreciate you.
So we we utilize the services of Greater Kansas City Foundation, Greater Kansas City Community Foundation. And if you go to their website, you'll certainly see the BPU Scholarship App application there. The good thing about that is, you know, we're also they're also hosting a tremendous amount of other scholarship opportunities. So as we talk about BPU, it really opens the door for many, many other opportunities. So and we're encouraging our, but the program is all built around Wyandotte County students. Okay, so if you don't, if you don't live in the community and the parents don't have an account with the utility, then you know, you don't qualify. But if you do, then then those are there. The scholarship dollars are all primarily based towards STEM degrees. So if you are looking to go into the science, technology, engineering, math type degree and and there's a certainly not, I mean, that is certainly brought to some degree. But if it is a STEM program, then please get your application in. We'd love to continue this program. And hopefully, if we can find dollars to through to expand it a little bit, you know, beyond where it is, hopefully we can do that in the future as well.
We we jotted that down. We do a lot of work now individually with students on scholarships. We added that at COVID because we could, so we did like office hours where we just log on to Zoom. And and so now our team does a lot of one-on-one work with students, not just for our own scholarships, but preparing for other things. Because it can be overwhelming. I don't I don't know if y'all have done it yet, but I thought I was really good at that stuff until both my kids were doing it. And I'm like, what in the world? So Caitlin jotted that down. We'll definitely send students to that opportunity for sure. Thank you.
And the other last thing I would say for those of you that certainly go into these type programs, we do have a limited amount of internship positions here too. So you can certainly take advantage of that too.
Yeah, we we will have somebody touch base. And again, any of those kinds of opportunities you hear about, please pass that on to us because we that is really an area we're trying to grow in. It's like making sure we connect them with another opportunity so that they have a nice transition out into. And and when you talk about Snap IT, well, it sounds like that was a huge success. So I expect we're going to be doing a lot more of that. So we'll definitely hook up about the internship.
Thank you. And thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
And congratulations, students. Next, I'll move on to general manager staff reports. Before I get started, I will ask the board, if you want, how do you want to handle the financials?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks again. Thanks for coming.
David.
All right. Well, as you know, Mr. Manager, there's been some discussion about the financials, how they've been handled before, that usually they were presented by consent among the board. I don't know if there's any particular preference to depart from that this evening or have the entire it presented in their entirety. I'm willing for those that are certainly here to weigh in if we go with our newly established routine or otherwise, I'm open to to those suggestions.
My preference would be to continue as we have the last couple of times I've had a chance to look through it. And I'm I'm all just one one board member's opinion, happy to, by consensus, just adopt the report and keep moving.
That would be would that have to be undertaken by motion? Angela, I mean, would that have to be the or since it's been previously established is that?
Yes, previously you've asked Ms. Austin if there were any changes and then someone has moved to approve them as presented in your agenda packets.
Well, if that's the case, I will ask, and she she is with us prior to any motion being made, if there are any particular departures or anomalies in what has been presented before that we should be made aware of that's contained within the report.
No, there's not any anomalies or anything. It's in what I presented to you or what I sent to you previously was is how it is. I mean, there's really anything out of the ordinary in the month.
Our revenues, if I can ask, the revenues and are in sync with what I mean, anything in particulars that an uptick, a downtick in what our revenue?
Revenues overall were up about three percent over our budget. So that's about six, six point seven million dollars over our budgeted amount. So revenues are coming in fairly strong. We are into our summer month, just getting into our summer month. So you know, over the next few months, we'll we'll start seeing our summer revenue coming in.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
I have a question. I just wanted to note that, can I say this or not? I don't know.
I'm not sure what you're gonna say.
No, I was just going to note that operating expenses as to be expected at at this time of year also have shot up a little bit, right? So.
Through year to date, are you talking about just for the month?
For July.
For July.
Page six.
I'm sorry.
Page six.
Okay. Yeah, we're up up about one point four percent or about three hundred twenty-five thousand.
That's all I was going to say.
Thank you. That having been said, if there's no other questions, I entertain a motion.
I move to accept the July financials.
Okay.
All right, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, board. Just for the for good record keeping in our part. And then I know the board is going to get, at some point, we can free up time, go back to discussing on what you want how you want to restructure this sometime. But for our purposes in reporting and staying consistent with the policies, I do want to continue to at least list it. And then and then you can take take, you know, whatever action you choose at that point, if you're okay with that. All right, so next is Abby, faster to come back. And it's kind of really goes back to some of the policy discussions and some of the conversations I heard there about enhancement opportunities and things like that. So she's going to present a little bit of look into what we are have talked about and what we're considering. This is an ongoing conversation about where we should be, where should we get there? But it'd be a good, good opportunity to just provide a board a peek into some of these conversations. Abby.
Thank you, Bill. Hello, good evening. So I'm here to provide an update on the direction customer service is moving in the enhancement to the overall customer experience. We've heard the frustrations, we've heard the concerns, and we want you to know that we are listening. As someone with a background in customer service, my goal is to improve the overall customer service, to make BPU not your only option for electric and water service, but your preferred option. This is an evolution. It's not going to happen overnight and it will take some time, but we are going to be moving in the right direction. A few weeks ago, I shared with you the launch of our customer service scorecard. That allows us to monitor the progress, see results. But now we need to focus on how we're going to get to those results. A couple of enhancements that we're working on is our IVR upgrade. We have been working with IT, customer service and IT have partnered together and evaluating vendors that can help improve this. Our current system has some limitations and we want to provide the service that customers deserve. We need a system that's easy to use, allows them to self-service, provides accurate, up-to-date information and a bilingual functionality other than just leaving a message. The IVR system is one of the first touch points of a new customer. And we need to make sure that that first impression is the best, along with positive, ongoing interaction with our customers. So we hope to roll this out in 2025. A few months ago, we launched our customer portal system, My Meter. And we are currently in the testing phases of the start-stop transfer functionality and it's going very well. This will create a self-serve option for customers to be able to initiate their service needs with us, when and how is convenient for them. As somebody who recently just went through this process, I understand some of the hurdles and the pain points associated with starting service with the utility. And we're working to improve that and streamline that process. So we should have a go-live date on this in the very near future, before the end of the year. On our next board meeting, we, customer service will provide a demonstration of what customer experience looks like, a hands-on, so you can see when the customer contacts us, what that looks like. So more to come on that. Another focus of customer service is education and promotion of our customer programs and options. For example, Flex Pay. It's a prepaid program that allows a customer to avoid paying a deposit, provides the flexibility on how much they pay, no late payment charges. And there's a special app where you can pay and monitor your usage. And best yet, you don't get that surprise large bill later on. E-bill, just as it's, you get an e-statement or your bill in an email. One of the features that BPU offers that most utilities don't is the PDF of your bill attached in your email. If you look at Atmos or Kansas Gas or Evergy, oftentimes you have to log If you look at Atmos or Kansas Gas or Evergy, oftentimes you have to log into a portal in order just to see your bill. The fact that this is already attached in your email and makes that process very easy. You can save that, you can look at it right there without having to log in for your convenience. Auto-pay, again, just as it sounds, you can set this up to automatically take the payment out. So you don't forget it, there's no late fees. And you prevent any potential disconnection there. In my recent experience of this, I signed up for auto-pay and five days before I received an email reminder and a text reminder. And then same for the day of. So the email and text payment reminders and usage notifications, you can go to My Meter and you can sign up for these. All of these options allow customers to determine how they want to do business with us. It gives us the flexibility on what works best for them in corresponding with their, their utility. We continue to explore multiple customer options and incentives to encourage our customers to use these options. We are looking at a goal on e-bill for fifty percent adoption rate of our customers. That's aggressive, but I think it can be done. Fifty percent adoption of e-bill saves the BPU approximately two hundred thousand dollars every single year. We are also looking at Flex Pay, uh, Flex Pay adoption of five thousand customers. And that would save the BPU approximately thirty thousand dollars in expense every single year. But we want to provide the customers the education on why these help them and, and what benefit that they can get from that. So the incentives that would align with using those potential programs to meet the needs of the customers. Will all of those programs be utilized by every customer? No. But the ones that work best for them so they can do business with us the way that they choose. In good news, Mr. Haley, we have added a phone number for in-lobby appointments. So now that you can call and you can, you can still go online and schedule an appointment, but this allows another option. So customers can schedule a day and time to come in and speak to somebody. This information has already been shared on our social media platforms. In addition, it's listed under the contact us portion on our website. So this is already activated and ready for customers to use.
When, when is that number available? Nine to five or when is that?
It's available twenty-four seven. So if you do call after hours, you'll just leave a message and somebody will call you back. Currently, right now, I believe it says that we will call them back within one business day or two business days. One business day, thank you, Janetta, that we will call back within one business day. So if you do call on a Saturday or Sunday, it'll be the next business day. But that way, we left that open. So if customers, you know, cannot make that phone call until after they get off work or when it's convenient for them. Yes.
Thank you.
Camilla, I'm gonna ask it, but you know, I'm gonna ask it. Partly because, you know, this is, this is in response to a specific segment of our customer base that maybe does not have access and/or you know, just doesn't readily use electronics, right? And so how are we getting this message out to those people?
So we're working on adding this also to the IVR. So typically the customers that call in are using the IVR to check their balance, to check where they are on things. And so we can put that out there.
I would like to add that our next addition of the BPU connection, which is mailed out to all of our customers, will have this number available. And so this will be a portion of that.
Cause you know, I was gonna ask for a postcard to, to the folks. I mean, I've seen postcards for lots of other things, but you know, maybe I'm trying to, maybe a magnet, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, so BPU connection will have it there and, and we'll continue to promote that to see if people are getting the message and hearing that. You can go online and, and schedule something, but to your point, if, if somebody doesn't feel comfortable doing that or, or that's not their preferred method, this is another option.
Thank you.
And obviously it's gonna be posted on the front of the lobby. What, I mean, the, the phone number. If someone, for those that still want to come and walk in, it will be very largely posted to schedule a lobby, I mean, but at the kiosk or some other prominent place.
Excellent recommendation. Thank you.
And we did talk about posting other information around the kiosk.
Yes, we did. I believe that was in regards to our next, next piece. That's okay. So just to provide an update on where we are with the kiosk. So Janetta has done extensive research in looking into what options we have. Typically, right now, machines, cash machines convert dollars to coins, such as for laundromats and arcades and things like that. We haven't found a machine that takes large dollars into small dollars. And so we're still looking at that. The other issue is the payment kiosk does not accept coins. And so for example, if your bill ends in seventy-eight cents and you round up to the next dollar, that additional twenty-two cents is going to be applied to your bill. So because you can't, even if you have the exact change, it doesn't accept change. She's reached out to our vendors, she's looked at other vendors, some other machines. And so we are continuing to look at that. We're looking at what is potentially on the roadmap for our vendor on what they can do. So, so we are looking at that. But to Bill's point, we've signage that explains to the customer that, you know, it doesn't make change. So before they put in money that they realize they're not going to get back, letting them know that it does not make change. They, you know, rounding up to the nearest dollar would be the best option and that credit would be put on their bill.
I, you know, I, I've listened very intently about the need to have exact change machines. And I, I frankly have not seen, you know, why it's a real huge issue. I mean, somebody may overpay
Yeah.
nine dollars. I mean, I mean, if they have a ten dollar, but I mean, you know, in real time. And that nine dollars would be applied, if you said seventy-eight cents, that nine dollars and twenty-two cents because they didn't have change from it would go on their next bill.
Correct. A credit, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and so the machines that probably give coins back or whatever would be, I, I just, I, I've, I've heard the concerns, but I, I think that it's probably not as large an issue as it could be made that we could find some way.
Absolutely.
I, I, I only say that because you're continuing to look for other machine options. I, this one particular member of the board thinks that you've satisfied the issue for now.
I appreciate that. Well, we did want to make sure that you had an update and to also know that, that we have looked at a lot of different options. We want to make sure that if, if there is a concern that is brought to the board or, or by a customer, that we are at least looking into what we can do to serve them in the best capacity possible.
Abby, we have six kiosks, is that correct? Or five? How many around the city?
Do you know, Janetta, exactly how many? Sorry, I don't have that information.
We have, we have two kiosks, of course, out there in our lobby. We have thirteen in Wyandotte County. We have thirty-one throughout the greater Kansas City area.
I thought it's only six. What, what kind of percentage use the kiosks or just roughly? Is, I mean, are they used?
Not really. Yes, there are some that are widely used, like Hen House on eighty, something is widely used. Price Chopper is widely used. Sun Fresh is very widely used. Ours is, is widely used. So we have some throughout the county that are, that are very high volume machines. And then there's others that we, we get a little bit. However, it, since we're not the only one on the machine, those customer, those machines may be certain other customers that have other types of utilities and things like that.
I didn't realize there were that many, but.
So we, yes, there's, there's a lot of options and we do see it. I was always surprised to see Kansas City, Missouri or somewhere else where people make payments, but it's maybe where they work and it's closest to them. So it does provide that convenience.
True. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I just want you to know that the customer service team is committed to continually make improvements to be better and to look at ways that we can meet the customer where they are for doing business with us. Any questions?
Not a question, but just reiterating some of the discussion we had in the work session, talking about customer service policies. I really appreciate the focus on trying to make customers aware of the e-bill, the Flex Pay and the auto-pay, like we were talking about before. The things that can both streamline things for our staff and save sort of the input costs and also are really beneficial to customers. And you know, there's going to be different options for folks that are the most convenient, but all three of those are, are things that both save money in the budget and also hopefully set customers up for success and avoid, you know, unnecessary fees and things like that. So I, I just really appreciate that work. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I just also want to echo the same appreciation for the work and the dedication. This presentation makes me feel a lot easier about the commitment of our customer service team and for the work they're putting forward to make sure we have satisfied customers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wakes.
And I want to thank you for moving forward with the, the phone twenty-four seven to do that. I still would hope that we can look one day to those who will walk in or need to have immediate service and not go through a truncated process of having to make an appointment then to come in when, just to walk straight in would be, um, still be that. And I do appreciate that you're taking incremental steps to making our lobby experience or customer, uh, customer service more accessible by those that need it and hope still that we find ways through these baby steps to put meaningful, get back to where we were prior to your service here. We had a lobby that was open. It was no problem. It worked well to seven PM. Where those that really needed the help were able to access it. But thank you again for the incrementalism of full customer service in the lobby.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Okay, thank you.
Abby. Next, Miss Lanier's comments. I would like to just remind the board, the community, there will be a unified government meeting tomorrow. Certainly, one of, one of the topics will be BPU. I would ask that the community pay close attention to that. And and then just understand some of the things that we talk about here at the utility, what we're doing, support the community. All the efforts that go into providing you affordable electric and water service without compromise, at a competitive rate. And, and and with that, I would say we are moving forward with our next BPU connection. And a lot of that type information will be contained within that document. We need to, uh, we need to remind the community, you know, what BPU is, the hundred-plus-year history of the Board of Public Utilities and how we serve this community and still plan on serving this community going forward. This utility is owned by this public, okay? All the elected officials are voted in by this public. So we are all trying to satisfy what the customers expect and asked us to do. We can't, we can't do everything, obviously. But, but we are in, fully in the customer service mode for everybody that worked at this utility, the board and everybody that represents and speaks for this utility. So look for that. Nick, I'm not sure. I think you were still on target for this month. Okay, so, so we'll be, we'll be moving forward with that. Next, and last thing I want to do, I want to ask Lee to come up to the podium. Did sit down an announcement this week with new staff person. You guys remember and ladies remember Maurice Moss, who was here in the compliance room, Maurice took another position. We moved forward with, with bringing in Lee. So I'll, I'll let her talk a little bit about herself. She's very, very, very qualified and certainly glad to have her aboard.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Bill. So I met a few of you earlier tonight. So I'm, I'm still thankful on all the board members on, online. I'm Leemul Holland. This is my seventh day, beginning of my second week on the job. And just a little bit about myself. I worked, have worked for sixteen years in the power generation business for a Canadian-owned independent power producer. But I'm American. That's the byline I've been telling all the people I've been working, I have met over the past couple of weeks. For the past eight years, I've been the chief compliance officer. So really look forward to working with everybody at BPU and getting to know you all better. And I have a finance background. I spent the first eight years doing, in financial accounting and valuations. The company added a couple of assets every year. So managed that team and valued those, those assets. And have commercial experience too. And then spent the last eight years, as I mentioned, and as the chief compliance officer as the company grew. So we had assets in five markets here in the US, including SPP and MRO. So I'm familiar with those. I, those RTO and, and the regulatory community here. So I look forward to learning about water. I, I, we didn't have a water business and everything else that on the environmental side. So anyway, that's kind of it in a nutshell. So.
Well, and, and she did well during our interview. Certainly, we tested her on what BPU is, is confronted with on the environmental front. So she has deep experience here. Certainly on the NERC side, we have some audits coming up. So this is helping us prepare for that. And, and just fortunate to have her wanting to move back into the United States. She's a, she's a Midwestern person. And just glad to have you here.
I learned, learned to love hockey, but I'm happy to be back in college football. So, okay. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So, Mr. Vice President, that's, that's all I have today. I'll turn it back. Wait, oh, oh, hold on. Is there any one wanting to make comments on tonight's meeting, agenda, topics we covered? Please come up, state your name and and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Pamela Pen Hicks, Wyandotte County. Just a couple of things. On the customer service end, although you have made some improvements on that and I appreciate that, and David, I still appreciate your pushing to get more access. But there are a couple of communities that we need to be very careful that we are addressing. First of all, making sure that people have an interpreter if they need one. Secondly, for those who are disabled hearing, I didn't see any TDY connection for people who cannot hear or people who cannot see. So those are things that we need to make sure that we cover. We have significant populations in our community who are in those categories. That's the first thing I want to address. The second thing is I did look over your July financials. And I believe at your meeting with the BPU last week, I was there. And I heard you state, somebody asked a question about the days of, of cash flow that you have. And looking at your graph, you said a hundred and twenty days is what you were trying to aim for. And you're currently at eighty-four, even though you had, well, the July number says eighty-four days. Wanted to find out, because you have an increase in your revenue, you also have an increase in your operation cost. What goals do you set to achieve that? You've had rate increases, you've had, I don't know what you're gonna do with the pilot, that's to be determined. But does that factor into your cash on hand at all? How, what are your processes for getting to the point of a hundred and twenty days?
So yes, we, is it eighty-four, Lori, in your report? So and that, that report was July. And she'll, the August report will be out there, out there soon. So I think you'll see a little bit more uptick there. But one way, one way, one, one thing that we do to, to avoid future rate increases is to continue to try to manage the cost side of our business. Make sure that we're keeping our expenses in track, making sure we're accountable for revenues as much as possible, ensure that they do come in. And, and continue to find ways of streamlining and generating more opportunity to fuel our reserves when necessary. So our goal is a hundred and twenty days. Our rating agency tell us one fifty, one eighty. is where we should be, you know, you know, I don't think that that's a realistic goal to set anytime soon because it's going, it is taking us a time. And I have never seen us get to 120. So but it is part of our 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 goals to get there. And if you if you look at it, I'll look at it this way. Those reserves there is to is to protect BPU's credit rating and also to provide a reserve, a reserve dollars here in case of extreme emergencies because we don't have any other way of generating revenue other than to sell our services or to go out and borrow more money. So, you know, I'm certainly not wanting wanting to go and borrow more money. But 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 though we have limited amount of limited amount of of avenues available to us to be able to meet some obligations when when our reserves are taken ahead. Now, a lot of times when that happens, then the alternative is to take a look at our at our expenses and and then maybe maybe address some expenses at that time.
I asked that question because I asked that question because when with the UG now requiring the pilot to be paid by BPU and the pressure that is currently on whether or not BPU will remain a viable independent, semi-independent organization, how would paying for that pilot
That was three minutes.
reserves affect your operations significantly?
Okay, I would I would answer this, but I think you're
My time is up, but yours isn't.
Well, you know, I'm on record, I think a number of us are on the record that that the BPU should collect the pilot the way we currently are. Okay. If you look at any other utility in the in the in the metro, if you look at any utility nationwide that I know about, and I'm not gonna I'm not gonna sit here and say there's nobody that's different. But the ones that I know about are if it's a franchise fee or a payment on lieu of taxes, those are separate line items on the bill that utilities collect and pass along to their local city county government.
But not being paid by the rate payer?
Yeah, it's paid by the rate payers. But 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 what we're doing is showing you what that expense is. And if and if we do something different, then it won't be as transparent as it is and and what we and other utilities make it. So you should know.
But we're trying to get a better understanding of the whole process.
Right.
Okay, we know the ordinance now. We understand the what's going on between the BPU and UG. But I had not heard yet from
Yeah.
this board what their options are to address that issue. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, Ty Gorman, 2843 Parkwood Boulevard. Wanted to come down. I feel like I wasn't communicating clearly over the phone. So appreciate it. And want these comments to be taken in the context of what Mr. Johnson said about the UG meeting tomorrow, how important that is and the really important comments from from Pamela and C.C. around. In this time, the independence of the organization, the conflict of interest with the legal department. I think that the BPU as it is, has a much better chance of finding good solutions for customers and improving and being an organization that can make change in the lives of our most vulnerable residents than ever G does or than a different organization's model would. So within that context, want to ask about the comprehensive review of customer service policy. Is there a possibility to open that up to the the public and the network of robust nonprofits that represent our most vulnerable customers for further troubleshooting before putting that into effect? Seems like an important touch point with the public and and a good way of showing the public what's changing for the better here. Why wouldn't energy efficiency, I mentioned community solar on the phone, just because community solar is supposed to be a cheaper option for customers on a kilowatt hour basis. Its levelized cost of energy is half of the market peak energy. So for low-income customers, the community solar options can be cheaper in a subscription limited basis for low-income customers and other demand flexibility programs that I know BPU has offered or can offer further in the future with federal and FERC changes in the law to benefit residential customers, low-income customers. Why wouldn't that be a part of the customer service policy improvements, payment portal and outreach through community action agencies and other nonprofits? I don't think it's sufficient to just put out something on the BPU website and expect people to get it. You gotta really push it out through the organizations that meet people where they are. So I think that too would be a great in this moment of transition and difficulty with the UG, a good way to get people involved to push back and bring people into this process to show the good work that's being done by this board. And and, you know, the BPU is asking being asked by the UG to absorb an astronomical pilot tax for a lot of money. Almost over $30 million for the general fund, much higher than any other pilot taxes. The BPU could also be advocating with state, federal and local organizations for other sources of money. I think that's something that the UG has not been doing is bringing in money from these other relational sources from outside the community. So I feel like the BPU utility costs for trash and stormwater also focused on UG can be absorbed by other sources of energy. I'll call it for now and hope that those questions were clear and not lost in the amount of information I wanted to get out.
Yeah, so may I?
Sure.
Okay, so so, Mr. Gorman, thank you very much for coming in person tonight and for also being online tonight earlier. Appreciate that. I want to address the customer service policy piece that you spoke about and in particular. And I think that but if and I don't know if you had an opportunity to hear any of the work session tonight. I think that you know that if you did or didn't, I chaired the policy review committee for this board. And we we spent I could add up the hours and I, in fact, I probably will at some point collectively as a group, individually as board members to to put our best foot forward into these policies. We had a minimum of four. It's probably closer to six or seven public meetings, committee meetings that were available via Zoom. The recordings are available, I believe, on BPU's website. And those are noticed prior to those meetings occurring, right? And we spent, a lot of those sessions were three-hour sessions, okay? And you know, I have heard from members of the public who contact me directly. I'm confident other board members do as well. And you know, outside of those sessions, not necessarily inside those sessions, those are not interactive sessions. I I think, you know, I know you certainly have a familiarity with me. I know that you know that I am pretty available to folks and I do return calls and I do return emails and I try to be as responsive as I can be. And so when we talk about getting, you know, sort of opening this up to the public, this has been open to the public. The public has an opportunity to weigh in on this, right? The public also votes every single board member into its position. And, you know, we can have a debate about that another day if we don't think that's proper representation, or I don't know how we're going to do it, right? But what what I can tell you is, is, you know, the the board members who sit on this committee, it's Mr. Parker, Mr. Gronin and myself. You know, we we are listening to this community. And we are hearing what we're saying, what what folks are saying about our customer service policies and how we need to improve them. And again, I think if you heard earlier Brett mentioned, you know, a minimum of three times, we've gone through that document line by line. And there's going to be a lot of revision to it, you know, this go around. And and if you also heard, you heard about some of the major improvements that we've made in that document. And so so I want to get that part out there. And then with respect to the nonprofits and, you know, others that that, you know, assist folks in our community on various levels. I know that I don't know that there's been one this year, but I also don't know. And so I'd have to have staff keep me honest on that. But BPU actually staff meets with the majority of the nonprofits here at BPU to talk about concerns, mutual concerns that these groups have with respect to what they're hearing from their constituents that they serve through their nonprofits. And so that information does get back to the board sometimes in in presentations, but also sometimes just in communication that comes back to individual board members. And we factor that information in as well. So, I mean, this is, this is not, I mean, we are trying to be as transparent as we possibly can about how we've gone about trying to improve these policies. And as I said in the work session earlier, you know, we, this utility is doing its best right now. It can always improve. Everybody knows that. Anything can improve, right? Everybody can use improve. I can use improvement as a human. But we are doing the the best we can right now on this issue to meet our community where it is. And so if you think there are different way, I mean, we can speak about this offline. I know your time's up. I don't want you to get into a situation with Angel over here, but right, I mean, we can, we can talk offline about if you think there are ways that we can improve it still. But this has gone on for almost a year now, this actual review. And so that's how in-depth this review has been. And I just want to be clear about that.
I appreciate it. And I just want to clarify that my comments weren't meant as a critique of the process.
No, not at all.
As the possible avenue for community understanding and involvement at the at the kind of the micro and the customer service level moving forward to be able to communicate those successes.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ty. I too want to say again, we all appreciate the time and commitment the board's made in this to get us where we are. And and we're very close to close to seeing them approve these policies, which will provide even more benefit back to the community. Ty, I want to commend you on being a fan of BPU, with your earlier comments. Certainly, I think you see the value of of what we offer, okay? The way we're currently structured. So I I certainly want to commend you on on that observation and the comments you made. So thank you. Mr. Vice President? Is there anyone else? Anyone else? No.
All right.
I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, General Manager Johnson. Well, I'm going to reserve my comments until it's my turn. But let's see if we have any comments from the board and I'll make my comments at that time. We'll start with Rose Malvany Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I am confident nobody wants to hear my voice anymore tonight. So thank you to the public who came tonight. I appreciate you. Thank you to the public who was online tonight. You know, appreciate appreciate the engagement. Appreciate, obviously, the the efforts that, you know, the customer service organization is making to be even more forward-looking than it is now. Understand that it is, it's not going to happen overnight. And and I certainly realize that. And I know our community has waited patiently, but we appreciate the effort y'all are taking for that. And one last thing I would like to to do is I would implore my fellow board members to plaster this 573-9960 number anywhere and everywhere you can and get it out into the community. So folks know that there is yet another option for them to get an appointment in the lobby on the condensed hours as they are now. And I'm sure we'll be talking about that further as we get into budget season. But you know, we 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 need to do that as much as anybody else does. And I think we we are more community-facing than than, you know, than than the staff is at times. And, you know, we signed up for this. So let's get that number out there. But thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Mary Gonzalez.
Just want to say again to customer service, thank you for all your diligent work on trying to make this something that is consumer-friendly and easy to understand. And to my fellow board members who've served, I've said in here sometimes when you've met at 4:00 and listened. And I know you've put a lot of time and effort into this, and I appreciate all of your work.
Thank you. Brett Parker.
I'll be brief as well. I really appreciate all the great public input. It was wonderful to hear from the 2020 leadership group tonight. Big thanks to all of the staff, but especially with, you know, sort of the topic of the day. Our folks working on those customer service enhancements and policies. I really appreciate all of the wonderful information and on-the-ground context that you were able to give us as board members as we work through that to make sure that we produce something that works for customers, but also is achievable and supports the some of the great work that you all are already doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wakes, are you with us? Stevie Wakes?
Of course. I wanted to also say that many of my comments were expressed already at the time of the presentation or thereafter. But I just wanted to also express my gratitude to Mr. Johnson for your defense of the BPU under when it's under criticism and your ability to be able to explain and give detailed information. Because you deal with this stuff on a day-to-day basis. And it certainly is wonderful to hear the answers that were provided this evening, something that I think is really appreciated by those who come to hear and want answers to things that they don't understand about BPU. And I'm very pleased that those those answers were provided. And I think a lot of of great understanding was provided to those of the public who came to speak tonight. So it is my hope that those types of of answers can be provided and those questions can be can be put to rest for those who are really concerned about what's happening with BPU. And I think that it's going to be great to be able to defend BPU in the future when more of the public is aware of where we are in a lot of situations. Thank you.
Thank you. President Groneman.
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate a lot of the things that the other board members have already stated. I also would like to say that tomorrow is going to be very important for the BPU. And I would suggest and ask the public to pay careful attention to what goes on tomorrow night at the at the commission meeting. And think hard about what what it would mean to this community if the BPU were sold or merged into the unified government. There's been comments that were made that that we're a burden and not a benefit. I think that that will be determined by the by the community. So please pay careful attention to what's going on and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. For my comments, I'd certainly would want to first reiterate and thank 2020 leadership that was here, thanking them and abstentia for having been here and been a part and sharing with us what the young people are doing and the continuity of what they do. Also to welcome again, Lee, welcome on board. Glad to have you and looking forward to working with you. And thanking customer service too for the review and again, making the steps for the lobby and especially to thank working in conjunction with, as you have our team again, Rose Malvany Henry and Brett Parker and Tom Groneman. They're working overtime here, you know. I always say the board is so underpaid and they're doing, taking time to be there and to work in conjunction with you to try to get some customer service policies hammered down. And I do appreciate their service as well as yours and making it more cohesive. Finally, I I continue to be concerned about this, as was stated by Rose, I'm going to be plastering this number 573-9960 everywhere. And also would wonder about a same-day appointment. If somebody sees the number and they happen to be out front, if they could call If somebody sees the number and they happen to be out front, if they could call right then and to see if they might be seen right there in the lobby and to see how possible that might be. That gets closer to my ideal for what an open lobby looks like. And if indeed the immediacy might be employed, I throw that out for consideration. And finally, also to say that we want to look at some other things with the UG that's happening. What's happening is a major concern to so many of us in our community. The back and forth and what we, what we assume and what costs will have and where this utility, in fact, the broader tax structure and all Godspeed and deliberation during that process tomorrow and beyond. And thanking, as has been thanked, the public that was here, Ms. Harland, Ms. Penn Hicks, Mr. Gorman, for representing those views from the public standpoint and for being here this evening to do so. So that's all I have. If you're not watching the UG Commission tomorrow night online, which is available, join me in watching the Chiefs in the first game of the year. That's why I'm wearing the red, thought somebody would say that I would do that. And it's been an honor to pinch-hit and President, President Groneman instead. And you all point out to him, if you will, that he's still with us, that we help expedite it. It's a little bit shorter meeting when I'm, when I'm here. Thank you for allowing that.
Mr. Vice President, Angela Lawson has a comment to make.
Ms. Lawson?
It's a question, if, if everyone watches at home and just listens, it's one thing. But if one member is going to be there and participate in public comments or more, so I'm just wanted to poll the board to see if there were going to be more than four or more than we needed to notice it up as a public meeting for the BPU board.
I don't plan to attend personally.
I'm sorry?
I don't plan, I personally don't, I'm just saying for myself.
I am unavailable for it as well.
Okay.
I will not be attending tomorrow night.
I will be there, but I'm not going to make any public comments.
But I just, if some, if another member does, so that's why I'm polling everyone. Sorry.
Mr. Wakes? Okay, Mulvaney Henry?
I will not be in attendance in person tomorrow night. I'm unable to be. However, I am sending a statement.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute and I couldn't unmute. But I, I, I don't plan on being there in person. I'm still dealing with, with, with my COVID, so I don't plan on being there, but I plan on listening in either during the meeting or afterwards.
Okay.
So I'm the only one that's going and I'm not speaking.
But we, we have a statement, so I, I've only counted three that were either going or issuing or listening or issuing a statement and three that were not be listening in.
Quick clarification, if one is listening in virtually, does that count towards?
It would, because if, if you were all just listening in virtually and no one made a statement or, or made comments, then you wouldn't be communicating. But once one of you makes a comment, which is your right, obviously, I'm not trying to.
Out of an abundance of caution, should we just notice it?
I think that would be best. That way, if you are listening and you wish to make a comment.
We would just notice it, that it, that it potentially is a public meeting.
Yes.
In the event that, yeah, I mean.
We'll get, we'll get that out tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that's, I think that's the safest.
Okay, well.
Second?
All right, well, there's a motion to adjourn in a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman?
Aye.
Ailey?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.